Let me begin the forum. We will start with a three-minute introduction for each candidate, beginning with Henry Anderson.
I'm running for this office because I have enough compassion and courage to place people before private. I'm running for this office because I have enough compassion and courage to see the middle class expand and become richer, to see poor people decrease and become middle-class and rich. I'm running for this office because I know where I am and what time it is, and I know that Atlanta is the place that sets the tone for not only the state of Georgia but for the whole United States. Everything in this country was changed from Atlanta, Georgia, through a man named Martin Luther King. And I know that the God I serve always goes back to finish something where he starts. I'm glad to be a part of the finishing process, but that's why I'm running.
Thank you, sir. All right, Felicia Moore.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Felicia Moore, and I am proud and excited to be our candidate for Atlanta City Council President. I have served Northwest Atlanta for nearly 20 years on the Atlanta City Council, representing areas from Bankhead to Buckhead and everything in between. I've had the privilege and honor of representing a very diverse district, and I believe that diversity that I have served in District Nine is making me uniquely qualified to serve the city, which is also very diverse. I have been the candidate who has sponsored, not only once, but twice, a living wage ordinance in the city of Atlanta, making sure that our city workers at least receive quality pay for the work that they do so that they can also benefit and live here in the city of Atlanta. Our final living wage ordinance we passed was in Vegas, and I supported that, but as City Council President, I will certainly urge and encourage the mayor and the next council to make it $15 an hour and not a phased-in approach. I am also a very strong advocate of three things that have been sort of the cornerstone and the consistency that I've had in office. One is ethics. Ethics is truly important because it's your trust in city government. I sponsored legislation to make sure there's mandatory training for city council members. I helped update the code as committee on council chair, and I believe that ethics is an extremely important foundation, first of all, so that you can trust your elected official. I believe in accountability. Not only ourselves or what we do, what we say we're going to do, that goes to the trust issue. If we have promised communities that we're going to deliver on something, we need to deliver, and if we can't deliver, we need to be open and honest and let you know why we can't deliver. I believe in affordable housing, making sure that we work on that because we have let the horse leave the barn on that, and I'm a supporter of community benefits agreements because over time we have not held our trust and our word when there are major developments happening in the city, and I've been supportive of that. I've been endorsed by the Professional Association of City Employees and the International Brotherhood of Police Officers. I would love to earn your support on November 7th or at the early voting dates which are listed in your program. Again, my name is Felicia Moore, and I want to be your next Atlanta City Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Wong.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alex Wong, and I too am here to ask for your vote and your support in the November 7th election to be your next Atlanta City Council President. Just thought I'd take a quick second and tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Stone Mountain, Georgia, went to the DeKalb County Public Schools. I have an engineering degree from Georgia Tech. I also have an MBA from Oregon School of Business. I've had a very professional career. I've worked on Wall Street for about two and a half years, got a finance background there. I worked in engineering for about 20 years. I've worked for a housing provider for homeless people here in Atlanta for three years, and I'm currently an employee at Emory University. You know, I come from a working family. I too share the values of hard work and being rewarded and compensated for that. It's a work ethic is something strong in my family. Going across the city campaigning in this election, the different people I've talked to, and quite frankly, I've been shocked by what I see in terms of disparity between things that are happening in my district versus things that are ever happening in other parts of the city. I'm not happy with that, and I don't think a lot of folks in the street are happy about that either. Disparities in economic opportunity, I see disparities in even just the conditions of our communities, public safety, infrastructure, and it's not acceptable to me, and that's why I'm running for Atlanta City Council President. I think you hear a lot of all 95 of the mayor candidates that are running talk about everything that they want to do and how we're going to get there, you know, what they're going to do to get us there. Quite frankly, I think it's just important how we get there. It's struggling all of a sudden, just watching what's happening in Washington and what's happening at the state level. If we keep sending leaders and electing leadership that are divisive and loners and don't collaborate with others, we're going to continue to get the same results, and I don't think Atlanta deserves that. In fact, I know Atlanta doesn't deserve that. We deserve a collaborative approach. We need everybody at the table, both from the public, private, nonprofit, and higher end sectors, all of which I've worked in, and that's the kind of spirit, that's the kind of energy that I know we can bring, I will bring to City Hall and the City Council President's office. So I look forward to our conversation tonight, and thank you for letting me be here.
All right, so the first on the slot question is would deal with governance, and I will begin with Felicia Moore. There's a lot of confusion about what the City Council President actually does. Everybody kind of knows the mayor is the executive mayor, and they run stuff. What is the job description of a City Council President in your view, Felicia Moore?
Well, I think they have the charter and code provisions that they have posted on the board. One of the most important ones, as you talk about the mayor, you understand that if by some unfortunate reason the mayor is disabled, or if the mayor's out of the country for an extended period of time, you are electing a person who will serve as your interim mayor. So you should have that trust in that person. You also have a person who is the leadership of the council and will select who the leadership of the council is, from the president, I mean, from the chairman of the committees to the makeup of the committees, and that's important in how you get legislation moved as city government. Who is on those committees and what type of job do they do? How do they engage with the public? Those types of things. You also have the ability to, of course, preside over the meetings, vote in the case of a tie. What hasn't been used a lot is the ex-official or non-voting member of a committee, which means that the president can go and sit in on committees and be a part of the deliberations, ask those tough questions, make sure answers are being had so that the council can make a valued decision. And then, of course, your point boards and commissions and you do other routine things, but I believe that the role of council president can be expanded far beyond that, and I'm looking forward to making sure that I have some legislative issues as well as providing policy. I can write policy, I can introduce it as the president, but I certainly can write it and get other council members to introduce it on my behalf.
All right. Henry, what's interesting is that I know that there is nothing new under this sun and that every problem that exists has existed in the past, and every solution to those problems have existed in the past and they exist again today. It's just a question of do you want to solve those problems? And if you solve those problems, are you solving it for the people or are you solving it for a special interest group? We have to do things for the good of all concerned. The City Council President should do that and not be in a box. He should think outside the box. He should do things outside the box because when we operate with the parameters that are there right now, nothing gets solved. No problems get solved. Everything remains the same. The status quo remains the same. It is business as usual. Alex?
Thank you. So I divide the council president's role into two buckets. One is operational, and my colleague described that very well, you know, presiding over meetings. The one thing I differ with you on is I like to call the serving as vice mayor kind of the first runner-up of Miss America, because if Miss America can't perform, first runner-up steps up into that role. But the other bucket that I'm really excited about is what I call opportunity and opportunistic, and is the council president has a unique vantage point where he or she gets to kind of see the entire city council, the city council members as well as the city government, and convene people and bring people together to tackle some of the big problems that we've got. It's like transportation. Think about transportation infrastructure. It's something that City Atlanta cannot solve on its own. We need help from, like I said, our private sector, our nonprofits, our higher-end partners, and even our regional partners to come together and craft solutions because, you know, sometimes you solve a problem in one area and all you're doing is squeezing it to another. That applies with public safety as well. I think that platform, that opportunity, that vantage point is where the real opportunity for our city lies going forward, and I think it's going to take someone who can really convene folks and bring people together, build consensus, and find that collaboration and build that collaborative spirit to solve our problems, and I think I'm going to be the...
Do you have a specific plan to holistically address the homeless situation in the city of Atlanta?
Number one is that I don't call them homeless. I call them wilderness dwellers. And when I call them wilderness dwellers, I see the solution to the problem because there used to be a group that was in the wilderness for 40 years, and they were taken out of the wilderness and they developed a nation, the nation of Israel, which became the most powerful nation in the world of its day. The same pattern that was used to do that can be used again today to utilize the gifts and the talents of that community, not to marginalize them, to make them work as part of a workforce, but to develop them into a nation, to develop them into business owners and not workers, to develop them in a way in which they can feel that they are part of society, to own housing, not be a renter, and make somebody else rich, but they can have their own co-op or kind of, or house. You know, it's time to stop using people as customers and start using them as partners.
All right, I got a follow-up. So specifically, if you were City Council President, you have power of government. What would you do with this power of government to help displace the division called homeless, called wilderness, whatever you call it? What would you do?
The first thing I would do is I would want to find out what their skills and their talents are. The second thing I would want to do is develop self-sufficient communities, communities that would rely on their own population for jobs, for everything, you know?
Let me go to Alex with that same question. Alex?
I appreciate your question. This is homeless, this is a subject that I have a lot of passion for. In fact, I devoted three years of my professional career to it, working in the sector of that's why a person is homeless in the first place. Sometimes it's substance abuse, sometimes it's mental disability, sometimes it's a physical handicap, but whatever it is, you have to address that, or all you're doing is extending and creating a long-term homeless situation, and that is the approach that I support. When the city just recently proposed, and I voted for the Homeless Opportunity Bond that brought together 20 some odd million dollars, paired with a match by the private philanthropic community, to create this web that catches these folks as they come into the system. So, you know, I think some folks just need a little bridge. They had a little bit of bad luck, and all they need is a little bit of help to get them through with their next job, their next opportunity. There are others that need a little longer-term help, and there's some that are always going to need permanent help, and what we have to do is just build that network out that addresses the full spectrum and make sure that we have services and service providers, not just the city but our nonprofit partners as well, along the way, everywhere, because what we want to do is just get them back on their feet back in society. That's what they want too. All we need to do is help them and give them that lift, and that's what I would do as council president, is just make sure we're executing on the bond dollars and we're bringing the right partners to the table to talk about this.
All right, Felicia?
Well, like him, I don't like to use the term homeless. It struck me one day, I prefer to refer to them as people without homes. My plan as Atlanta City Council President, understanding that each and every elected official on every level has some role to play, but as my plan for Atlanta City Council President is to make sure that I use the position and the office to create, use it as a bully pulpit, to make sure that we're addressing those issues. I'm an active, engaged member of the Georgia Municipal Association, which in our cities all over the state of Georgia. I want to use that to help make sure that we have policy that we collectively ask the state legislature for, which we need, and was mentioned, you know, health services, workforce, veterans need assistance, all of those things need to happen. I want to also use my active engagement with the National League of Cities, which are cities across the country. We're not the only ones that have people without homes. Other people have best practices, looking to see what others have done, seeing how we can leverage that, certainly lobbying and advocating on a national basis to get the funds that we need here in the city, in the state of Georgia, to address people without homes. And also, right here on the city level, making sure that I appoint the correct person to head our community development human services committee, who will be laser-focused on that, and will not just give a cursory review to our consolidated plan, which has the funds that we give out for these type of issues, but someone who's going to make sure that we dig deep and make sure that those funds that we have are being used for the people without homes.
Let's start by the affordable housing. So the most common call I receive, not on the phone air, but to my office, where people just need help, is for calls of a housing issue, and those that can't afford the house, many times, especially they often, they can't afford to keep the house up. I'll be taking trips on weekends to put up shelters, to do plumbing, and I'm wondering, where is the city, and why aren't they helping? All right, so I want to ask you this question directly. If you're City Council President, how would your leadership differ when it comes to individuals who are living in Atlanta? Many of them are part of our senior community, and they're struggling to not only keep their homes, but to keep them up. And Alex, I'll start that question with you.
Thank you for the question. So I see, I'm an engineer, I'm sorry, I like to break things up into building blocks and then put them back together, so I kind of see two separate issues here. We're talking about the senior community and affordability. One is being able to, and the city has to facilitate, folks being able to age in place. And right now, with increasing home values, a lot of folks are getting forced out because they're on fixed incomes and can't stay and can't afford the rising property taxes. We have to find a way to help address that. I am supportive of the concept that has been introduced with the West Side Fund that provides tax support to those folks to cover or help supplement the gap between what they can afford and what the property taxes and property values, or the property taxes associated with the rising property values. I think that is a great model. I think we need to continue to find funding for that because seniors living in place, aging in place, helps stabilize a community, and I think about my parents in the situation and the stability they bring to their neighborhood. Second bucket you mentioned is an important one too, is not only should we help them with their property taxes, but we also need to help them with the condition of their homes. I was on, I served on the investment line on the board for three years from 2006 to 2009, and that was one of the big projects I supported and on the West Side, and had a West Side PAC money, money that went to help seniors paint their homes, update their HVAC, replace windows, help lower their energy costs so that they could continue to live in their homes and live in them comfortably. And so I think we've got to make sure that we tackle both sets of issues, not just the rising property value, but also making sure that we're allowing them to maintain their homes so that, you know, their homes are comfortable and are somewhere that they want to stay on there.
Felicia?
Well, I think as, no, I think, I know as council president, I will certainly start with things that I already have done and are doing in my district and expand upon those. One we have in my district are the host to many new senior facilities. As a matter of fact, we should have one, we're returning soon, that was the site of a whole dilapidated apartment building, providing affordable housing for seniors where they can live, and particularly these are middle to low-income seniors who are ready to move out of their homes and have a place where they can have a community. I've also worked very heavily with rebuilding together in Atlanta where we've gone in and retrofit homes. We fixed roofs, we painted houses, we've done the things to help stabilize the homes for those seniors who want to live in place. I've also allocated money in the Perimote PAC. We have not been able to move on it yet, but I'm still going to push the next council member for District Nine to, that will be directly allocated to doing the RICAC money for the senior citizens. Many of these tax allocation districts, we're using it for all the big developments, but we're not thinking about the people who live in the communities, particularly our seniors who need to be in place. I provided for my seniors Protect Your Property seminars, where we've had information sessions to tell them how to keep their houses maintained and do the things that they need to do to be able to keep the value of their property. And my council president office will be as it is now, as a council member, a resource. So when my seniors have issues, I will be there, my staff will be there to help direct them to the other organizations that provide services to seniors that I've been able to collaborate with over the years.
All right. Henry?
Yeah, well, I want to disrespect our seniors, and I just have to tell the truth. In the past, the city council as well as the mayor's office has been a part of our seniors' rendition franchise. When Shirley Caesar, Shirley Franklin, rather, was mayor, it was a time when new homeowners that came into the black community were giving $50,000 for home improvement from the city, and then $40,000 from the county. That's $90,000 to improve the property that they brought, which increased the tax base, which made it almost virtually impossible for the seniors to pay their taxes. So I hear people talking about they want to be a part of the solution, but you can't be a part of the problem and a part of the solution at the same time. You got to be on one side or the other, you know? And it's not a question of moving our seniors out of their housing, it's a question of them maintaining their housing, their passion from one generation to another.
All right. Our government works best when you guys can disagree but can also compromise for the greater good. At City Hall, there's something called NOD Squad, where people simply vote exactly how the mayor votes on almost everything. What is it in your background portfolio that would lead us to believe that you wouldn't dare be part of some NOD Squad with the new incoming mayor? And I will start with Felicia.
Well, I think if any of you have ever taken any time to watch City Council, that would be the last thing that I would be described as. I'm certainly an independent thinker. I want to know information. I want to ask questions, and I want to do my job. You have three branches of government, and the council has a very specific duty, and you need to be able to do that duty. That doesn't mean that you can't collaborate with the mayor. I've collaborated with, I can think of pretty much at least two of the last three mayors. I can't think of an example exactly with the Campbell administration, but I've collaborated on many issues with Shirley Franklin. I've collaborated with my colleagues and even this mayor on issues. We collaborated on the pension reform. So when people are willing to work together, you can get things done, but you still have to have your principles. You have to have certain things that you're consistent in, and you have to be able to do your job. And sometimes that is a popular thing, and sometimes it's not a popular thing, but you have to be able to do what the people elect you to do because when we have a government that all goes one way, the citizens are not the ones to benefit. There has to be a check and balance.
Henry?
Well, in my history, I think '96, there was a sick-out in Atlanta public schools. We all the teachers and a lot of schools didn't go to school because they wanted better conditions for themselves as well as for children. That was my idea, and I orchestrated that. In 2006, I ran for state school superintendent because I exposed cheating in the school system, but they didn't want to do anything about it, so I felt that I should run for office and try to expose it, but I wasn't allowed the opportunity to get it out and be open. But I'm not afraid to go against the system. I'm not afraid to go against the powers that be on behalf of the people.
Alex?
So I think you kind of had two of the council members on your panel who are definitely not part of this administration's NOD Squad. I established that early on in my terms as council when I voted against the Mercedes-Benz Stadium deal, and it was interesting during that, and actually, there are two other examples I want on the list. Civic Center transfer, I voted against that. I did not think that there was enough vetting on that. And the underground street abandonment, because we bypassed public input, I voted against that as well. These were three huge, huge initiatives of the administration, and I had no problem standing up and saying no to that. And what was interesting about the stadium conversation though was afterwards, they sent everybody, the administration sent everybody to lobby council members, and they sent everybody at me, and after the vote was over and subsequent conversations, I had one of the senior folks in the administration come up and say, "Alex, we never have been able to figure you out until now, and we understand that no matter what pressure we place on you, you're going to vote, you're going to be principal, we have to build a business case, and at the end of the day, you're going to vote the way you think you need to vote. My constituents know that, and I've explained to them, in these tough situations that I'm about to vote this way, our district may suffer for it, but you sent me down there to stand my ground and be principal, and I'm going to honor that." Example, a final example I want to bring up is that the mayor and I have individually gone head-to-head. You know you've arrived, when the mayor comes down, the city council chambers in, just yells at you from the stand, and you did that with me during the Senate season about four years ago, and I took it, and we had a disagreement, but I'm proud to say that that topic that we fought about, I've still managed a way to find a way to preserve the relationship with him and his department folks to continue attacking the problem, and I can say that what that has resulted in three years later is savings of somewhere between $10 and $20 million in this year's budget. It's about, standing on principle, but it's about finding a solution. You have to preserve the relationship, and that is my style.
What is your stance on the city of Atlanta having memorials, basically, three names and monuments of the Confederacy?
We addressed this issue when we were going to name apart, and it was an issue about Confederacy, and I think the council responded appropriately to that. I believe that we can't erase history. We hear people saying that you're trying to erase history when you erase these monuments. We should never do that because it certainly teaches us, and I don't get it. I do think that there are appropriate places for these symbols, and I think we need to work towards that. I know that we're looking at, I'm not so happy that they're going to be doing it too quickly, but I do think that we need to have a reasoned and thoughtful approach about how we remove them and understand what we need to remove. Majority of them are state monuments, but we do have some streets that could have stand and name change, and we also have a few monuments that we could either put in some sort of museum or whatever. I think that the environment that we have would cause us to want to change it tomorrow, make sure that everybody in this city has a say in how we do it, and if we're going to change the street name. So I said, "Well, change the street name today." Okay, so we'll take the Confederity down, what we're going to call it? That's a whole nother conversation. Who are we going to honor, or what are we going to put in this place? So I am for a thoughtful conversation, one that's deliberate, so that we can find out how we're going to deal with these symbols in our city, and I do think they need to be dealt with in some manner.
My counsel colleague has said to have a thoughtful and reasoned approach to this. I think it's critical that the public has an opportunity to get involved and be able to discuss the challenges, the opportunities that we have. My concern is I don't think removing everything solves the problem. It's about context, it's about the learning opportunity, and it's about the conversations that we have as a community, still, obviously, still have to have, and, you know, whatever we do, the actions that we take, if we remove some, all, none, I think that's what I want to focus on and I want council to focus on, is, okay, you know, the action is the action, but what is the context of the conversation? Is it best had in a museum? Is it best adding to or rounding out the story around a memorial or a symbol with other symbols as well? I grew up in... I grew up in Stone Mountain, I grew up with that carving in my backyard all day long. I know that my experience growing up as a minority in the South is not the same as yours, and it's just different from other minorities here that have come and joined the city of Atlanta. But it is my experience, and because of it, I have a compassion and a passion to make sure that we do things in a way that keep people at the table and talking, rather than just continuing to buy, violently buy, unfortunately endorse the country over this topic. So, you know, that's my thoughts on it. We still have a lot of work to do, and I don't think that there's a role of this going to solve everything. But again, I'm just going to emphasize the issue of community, conversation, and context of these objects.
Henry?
Yeah, I think what we have is a teachable role, because I taught in school, and I taught to white kids as well as black kids. And to be truthful, black kids know the lie, they don't do anything about it. White children believe the lie about us. And I think that it has to be a dialogue, and dialogue can come out of this situation in terms of what the monuments represent, and really, there's a need for them to understand who we are and who they are, and our history as well as their history. I remember when I came to Atlanta, and Atlanta Public Schools, they had African and Indian, and they were teaching both black and white kids about African life and the importance of it. But when you take that out of school, you're telling me that black life doesn't matter, you know? So it's deeper than the monuments. We need to understand the history, true history, of each other, and see where we can come together and solve this problem of having disrespect and begin to respect one another, whether or not there's monuments, or a street named Martin Luther King, or a street named property in need or Confederate. Those things really are just symbols. We need to understand and have a compassion for people and not symbols. We got to go deeper than the symbol.
Let's do this, I dare you at this point, out of line. The audience, if you've got a question, if you have a note card, let's go ahead and get those collected, I'm shifting gears now, let's get those collected. Let me go into jobs and economic development, okay? Let me begin with Henry on this one. How will you support small businesses and communities while development is ongoing?
I think that I would want to develop indigenous businesses, black as well as white, even when you go to Buckhead, those stores aren't even owned by the people of that community that live in that community. We got to start dealing with internationalism and do some nationalism in, in terms of having our own infrastructure built with our own people, you know, and it's time to stop just selling out, you know, or allowing other cultures to come into the community to keep one culture down while elevating another culture.
What's your answer to that question?
I wasn't sure if you were throwing shade at me or not, so I'm going to just assume that you wasn't. So small businesses are near and dear to me. My father was an entrepreneur, he started his own business, and he was very successful at it, but, you know, I watched them, I would know small businesses, they stay and they fight, they fight through the downturns, and they fight to keep their doors open. And that's an area that I've been talking about as I've been going around the city that I want to focus on going forward in terms of providing economic opportunity for everybody, but specifically for small businesses. I don't think the city is doing enough through our redevelopment agency in terms of providing support to small businesses, like small business loans, consulting services, resources, helping businesses identify what the emerging industries are that they can start getting ready for or take advantage of those opportunities. We're focusing on the big businesses that come in and drop five hundred jobs today, but guess what? In the next downturn, they're going to take three hundred of them away. A small business that will hire local and will fight through, they can, then they'll put everything they have on the line for that business and for their employees, and that's what I think stabilizes communities. I don't think helping small businesses and all the developments happening are mutually exclusive. We're seeing a lot of that in my area right now. I just think we need to find a way to spread that across the city, because everybody has the ties lift. Everybody that is in the city of Atlanta should have an equal chance to enjoy that prosperity, and I think small businesses are really a way to open that door to communities that have enjoyed it so far.
Felicia?
Well, small businesses are the foundation of our community, and I understand the challenges that they have, because my father used to be an assembly line worker at Ford Motor Company, but when he was laid off, he started his own convenience store. And so I know the difference when you're living in a family where your hands are met by how many sales there are, how many bills, how many permits they have. There are many ways to help small businesses. In District Nine, I do that by building relationships. I go to the chicken wing place, and I don't really holler over that part way, I go to Me World, I go to the grocery stores, I go to the convenience stores, and I know who the business owners are, and they tell me what their needs are, and when they need help in City Hall, being able to usher through some of the things that take time away from them doing the business, I'm there to do that. And I also bring to them, because there aren't a lot of resources that are through Invest Atlanta that many of our small business owners don't have, and so I let them know about that. I've paid foreigns for some of our small and medium-sized businesses to make them aware of those. And then the biggest issue the small businesses have are capacity. Many of them don't have the capacity to understand how to do some things in business and to be able to be stabilized, do what I can, and find someone to connect them with, that's what I do. So that's how you support them, because if you can support them in their downtime, or in their meantime, or when they're just doing okay while the new development is coming in, they will be able to last and be able to take advantage of the prosperity and increase business as a result.
Let's talk about transportation. How do you utilize your platform to increase the accessibility of transportation for disabled and the elderly?
We can bring transportation closer to people, it will help them be able to get to jobs, they wouldn't have to get up at five o'clock in the morning to get to a nine o'clock AM job, they will be able to be picked up closer to their homes, and these buses can also be retrofitted to have disabled and for elderly as well. And transportation is the number one issue that I about want to talk to many seniors and senior facilities, and many of the facilities, they're saying they need transportation so that people can get to where they need to go. And if we can find a way to have a part of it, help supplement that, that will help our elderly get to the doctor, get to the grocery, get to Walmart, where it is they might choose to go.
And Henry, let me ask you in another way. As a citizen, did you know?
No, I didn't know, but I do know this, that if affordable housing would have worked, it would have thrown a monkey wrench into gentrification.
Right.
They wouldn't have been able to move people out if they had affordability, if staying, so it wasn't supposed to work.
Right. Wow. You can drop the microphone there.
So that's in two thousand and five, as you passed the Belt Line, there was Section Nineteen of the Belt Line that said you have to have community benefits, and that's, again, two thousand and five. It's now two thousand and seventeen, and for those of you who are on council, you see stand-up over there quite often talking about affordable housing and community benefits. So I asked the same question around affordable housing. What have you done to ensure that communities actually receive their benefits from the Belt Line? And then two, as we have a situation with Turner Field being sold to Georgia State, and a community that's been organizing around community benefits for more than two years and has not had the kind of traction that they need, what would you advise them to do?
Well, first of all, I've been very supportive of those who have come down consistently about community benefits. And when you have major transformative projects like Turner Field and others, they need the community benefits, it goes back to what I talked about earlier, the trust issue, because when we have these projects, we know a lot of promises are made to kind of get it through, and then you can look ten, twenty years down the line and don't see anything happen. And I still believe that they can still have a committed community benefits agreement, not a plan, but an agreement. While we are talking about affordable housing, it's okay for them to say that they're providing affordable housing, but what is affordable? And you need to look at making sure it's affordability at different levels.
You know, I will say, that's another one of the things that I'm excited about, the management point of the council president, is that, you know, a lot of times when things aren't in your district, it is challenging, sometimes even frowned upon by your colleagues of sticking your nose into other districts. It doesn't mean you can't or shouldn't necessarily, but that's one of the things that excites me most about the council president office, is that you do have a citywide management point, and you can bring folks together who have like interests around affordability, around community engagement, around community benefits agreement, even if we have another giant transaction in our future. I think there are missed opportunities that I've seen, at least on the two terms I've been on council, and want to work, and will work as council president, to make sure we don't miss those opportunities going forward.
We've seen police officers have body counts, they turn them off, or they have attempted to manipulate the data afterwards, and there's no penalty on the votes. As a discipline, there's no legal remedy for what they've done. Would you be in support of some type of actual penalty if a cop is caught red-handed trying to manipulate footage from a body count?
Red-handed, most definitely, but what we need to do, and the council will have to do as president, I certainly can help support them in this, is we need to look at the SOP, the Standard Operating Procedure. Those are developed where I hope is, we allow the chief to have purview over what those procedures are. And to this point, I haven't really seen an updated version of it, so we need to be looking at that and making sure, and if it doesn't have that, that we encourage or either legislate what we want to do.
All right. Alex?
Yeah, I would support that as well. I think the other tool that we have at our disposal, that the council and I would lead the conversation on this, is the Citizen Review Board. I mean, it is designed for infractions of abuse of police, and I think, you know, we can do more as a council to empower them, authorize them, and really put pressure on the police department, on when they have findings, that corrective actions are actually taken, followed through, and then implemented with the rest of the force, so I'm just thinking we got to put all the tools on the table.
Henry?
Yeah, I agree with that as well, and I think there should be some sort of penalties for that, around that, yeah.
All right. So I know you guys have other questions, I got questions up here, I just can't get to every single one of them. I need to be respectful of the time, the strength that we have. Let me allow each candidate to give a up to three-minute outro of why people should support you. Make sure you give your information, your website, your social media, whatever you want to give, because many people here will be interested in that, and we're also streaming on multiple streaming avenues, so make sure you include that. I will begin with Henry, and we'll go down the road.
And they can stand up on this one if they have.
Yeah, I think I want to say it though, since this is stand-up. I just want to say again that I do have the compassion and courage to stand up for people and their rights, and to go against the system and to go against the status quo. And I can be reached at my Facebook page, which is Minister Henry Anderson, or both Henry Anderson. And I'm really interested in knowing that we have to go outside the box. We cannot operate as business as you do, because we see it hasn't done anything in the past. We got to do something even and different. And we have to be able to hold all people accountable in public office. I just thank you for your opportunity to come and stay before, thank you.
Thank you. Felicia Moore?
Well, thank you all for your patience and for your listening. I am proud to be our candidate for Atlanta City Council President. I am certainly looking forward to the challenges of the job. I'm uniquely qualified to be the council president. In my experience, one, representing the great people of District Nine, from Buckhead to Buckhead to everything in between, understanding the diversity of our city. I started, the first day I bought my home in Riverside, as going to a neighborhood meeting, I became a neighborhood president, I fought issues of protection for environment and other things in the neighborhood, I pick up trash on the streets, I picked up dump tires, I turned in code enforcement issues, I became chair of my neighborhood planning unit, I also worked as an aide to a council member in City Hall, and that gave me the experience of knowing what needs to happen in City Hall, and what you want to happen in the neighborhood, and how to bring those together. So I was elected to City Council. I have been consistent, consistent in my leadership through three mayors and any other mayor this to come. I stand for ethics, we have to build our public trust, without that, nothing else we say or do matters. We have to be accountable for what we do, that means we need to know what we're talking about, we need to ask the right questions, we need to read our legislation, we need to be involved, we need to tell you when we do wrong, and we need to let you know how we're going to get it right. And then finally, my biggest issue, so it's going to be my number one thing, transparency. It's your money, and you should know how it's spent. You have money in your bank account, you don't have to put a home records request in with your bank and wait till they decide to give it to you, and then pay them for the information that they gave to you, because it's your money and it's in your account, and the same should be in city government. We need to put these affordability numbers out there, we need to hold City Hall accountable and get more eyes on city government, because the more of us that are watching, the better that we will do. So transparency is going to be my number one key.
I hope I've told you and shown you what I'm about. One of the things that we haven't talked about up here is the fact that there are going to be at least seven new council members come January out of fifteen. And, you know, I really believe, as I watch Washington, as I watch the state, if we continue to select leadership that's divisive and not collaborative, we're going to get the same results, and I'm not that person. I'm not divisive, in fact, I'm the exact opposite. In the two terms I've been on council, you have watched me, you've seen me bring folks together to get things done. All you have to do is look at my district and the different people we brought together from the public, the private, the nonprofit, and the higher end, all four of which I've worked in. I look to the future of Atlanta with a lot of optimism, but we're going to need you, we're going to need you with us in order to be innovative, to be sustainable, to, you know, implement technology to solve our problems. But more importantly, you know, I bring a message of inclusion, I want everybody at the table, and I want us to find together a way to get things done. That's, I think, what sets me apart from my colleagues and my competitors in this, is that that's my objective. It's not about politics, it's not about winning and losing, or, you know, it's about getting things done, because that's what you deserve, quite frankly. That's what you've been waiting for, for a long time, as I've been hearing, it hasn't been delivered, now it's time to get to deliver that. I want to make a comment about transparency, because my colleague mentioned that, she said that she's the only person in this race who is champion that, you know, transparency isn't something that only one of us can own. In fact, I'm the only council person who's, you know, because we got stuck in council with trying to get transactions out, I went ahead and just posted all of my city council, district transactions, the one that I have control over, out on the web for everybody to see the first day I took office. And that's how, I'm just about getting things done. If I can't get it done through City Council, I can at least do what I can on an individual basis. So, you know, AlexWanForAtlanta.com is my website, AlexWanForATL is my Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram handles, and actually, to learn more about me, like I said, I hope I've at least entertained you. I take the work very seriously, but I don't take myself that seriously, because at the end of the day, we have to be at the table collaborating and finding the solutions going forward. So I hope I'm going to vote, and I look forward to continuing dialogue through November. Thank you.
... of the public's time, and it has been a privilege to be a moderator. Let's give Deborah a round of applause.
Let's give Dr. Rashad Ritchie a round of applause. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.